I am going to come out and raise ass and call this meeting back to order. Um, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Um, first things first, I am going to dispatch with reading of the warrants to save ourselves time. Um, we're gonna go over a few ground rules here. I see, I think there's some people here who have not been to town meeting before, so I'm just going to briefly outline the process. Um, but first things first, I am going to read the names of some non-voters who are joining us here tonight. Um, Logan Barthel, Andrew Sergi, Andrew Genrich, our library director for the Town Public Library, Maureen Cohen, Mendon Upden Regional School District Superintendent, Dylan Wenholm, Mendon's Assistant Town Planner, Dr. Michael Fitzpatrick, Superintendent for Blackstone Valley Tech, Anthony Steele, the Assistant Superintendent for Blackstone Valley Tech, Lisa Mizinski from the Metacomic Land Trust, Tyler James, who is recording the meeting, Colleen Strifoni from Board of Health, Jack McFone from the Board of Health, Isabella Janova, our Conservation Agent, Jack Hunter, Mendon's Town Planner, Michael Metrick, the Architect for the Senior Center, Charis Norris, Mendon's Town Council, and Greg Alkonis, our Interim Town Administrator. Um, if there's any opposition to any of these non-voters being here in the meeting, um, please note it now, otherwise I am going to say they're all welcome to town for work. Alright, thank you. Um, and also, please note, this is our Town Clerk, Helen Agro. Um, right in front over here, we have the Town's Finance Committee. Uh, over on the right, we have the Town Select Board, um, Dan Byer, who's up there in the back and has done a lot to pull this meeting together as well, and myself. My name is Tom Marali. I am the, uh, Town Moderator for the Little Town Amendment and want to welcome the all today's annual town meeting. Um, there are other folks who've joined us who are on various boards and committees and there are town employees who can introduce themselves as they get us to speak. Um, so, uh, just some guidelines, uh, please be respectful. We're all nice, friendly neighbors here, and just because you disagree, you do not have to be disagreeable. I'm going to do my best to keep the temperature of this meeting at a nice, uh, well, the temperature of the discussion, I hate to mention about the sculpture heat, uh, unfortunately. Um, I'm gonna keep the temperature of the discussion nice and calm. Um, please address all questions to myself. If you want to address what a previous speaker said, please do not say their name. Um, please say previous speaker and, and address everything to me, and if I can, I'll get you the answer to the question, or at least, uh, we get somebody who does. Um, and also, all questions that's voted are up to me. If there is a motion made that I consider out of order, um, that's the moderator's purview, and I will take that. Um, if the proceedings aren't interrupted, um, and disrupted, I reserve the right to ask you to leave. Hopefully it does not come to that point, but if, if I do so, please do not take it personally. We have a lot to get through tonight, um, and, and there's a lot of people here, and we're going to do our best to get through it. So if I feel that meeting is being disrupted, um, I will ask the disruptive part to leave. Uh, please silence your phones. Um, something in today's world, sometimes we forget, but please make sure right now when it's silent, and if it is not, I, I reserve the right to make fun of your entire town. Um, when we're, we're getting to, uh, the point of debate on an article, please, if you have something you'd like to say, please stand up and get there. You see, there are two microphones on either side of the room. Please stand in front of the mic. Um, if you are unable to do so, please raise your hand, we will bring a mic to you. Um, when I acknowledge that it's your turn to speak, please state your name and your address before speaking, as I said before, um, address all questions to the moderator. Um, there's some certain, certain rules, regulations on certain articles that come up, like some need to be two-thirds, some need to be four-fifths, that sort of thing. I will, I will mention that as we get to those articles, um, and the why, as we get to them, as well as any other extraneous circumstances that come up. If you'd like to, um, if you're somebody that voted in favor of an article, um, or, and would like it to be reconsidered, you, it would have to be somebody who voted in favor of it to, uh, bring up reconsidering. Um, so, as you came in, you have the, you were given these little clickers here. This is the way you'll be voting tonight. Many have moved to electronic voting for town meeting. Um, please, these are your clickers. Please do not give them to anyone else, um, whether it's a child, brother, a random stranger who asks to borrow your clicker. Please do not give them away. They are yours as your voter. Um, this is your vote, your device that you're using to vote. Um, and also, at the end of the night, please, please, please make sure you return them. I promise the tellers, I will mention this at least three times, and I plan to do so, so, um, please make sure you return at the end of the night. Please do not let anyone else have them. Um, and you'll notice there are two buttons on here, one that says yes, and one that says no. Um, what I will say, and you can see there's a nice test question up here, what I will say is, I'm going to open the vote, and then we're going to be able to vote. If you change your mind while you're voting, you could say, oh wait, actually, I want no, and you'll see that, that it lights up and it says okay. Um, you can change your vote as long as the vote is open. Um, and it told me the total down there. Um, I'm gonna kinda gauge that to see when everybody's voting, but at some point, I will say, vote is closed, and then nobody else can vote, and the last button you press will mean what your vote is recorded as. Um, and if, if, from Mendon's lips to God's ears, if everybody in Mendon knows something, other people down the room will know. That's helpful. Um, uh, so yeah, so yes, we get, uh, along to certain rules regarding certain articles. I will bring those up and discuss those. Um, so that being said, we've got a lot to get through tonight, let's get right into it. So. You guys have had enough of me again. Um, so Article One by the Select Board.
I move to town vote that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as proposed by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out ordered unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding is being from available free cash, another line item, another article, or some combination that will be reduced by the same amount in ISO voting. Discussion? We must have a balanced budget, and such will be presented to the town this evening. This article ensures that the budget remains balanced after any proposed and agreed amendments to it.
Thank you, and I believe that we have a graphic to go with this. Jan Newey?
It is.
Okay, yeah, just to show, um...
What this graphic is, uh, is going to show is the beginning balance of free cash, capital expenditure account, and stabilization account, uh, as well as all the anticipated transfers from the proposed articles that will be left in free cash if all of the articles pass successfully. So, when we can see the balances now, before the questions pass.
Thank you very much. Um, any further debate from the residents today? If not, I am going to move into a vote. Please get out your votes. The vote is now open. I'm going to, every time I try to close a vote, I'm gonna vote. Five more seconds. Alright, I'm closing the vote. Thank you. Motion passes. By George. Alright, so for, um, coming up, we have something that's called a consent calendar. Um, the consent calendar will do is, uh, move several articles to be voted together, um, which are seen as, as kind of housekeeping and relatively non-controversial. Um, so we're going to vote to put these articles right here. This would maybe make them all, uh, basically this would have them all at once. Yes? Okay, um, let me just read out what it's going to be, and then if we have questions on them, um, I'll, I'll get your questions answered at that time. If you please get, uh, to the microphone so I can see if anybody has any questions while we're reading them. So, um, this is going to be Article Five, um, for Chapter Ninety, Article Six, the FY25 Assessor, Assessment Program, Article Seven, the FY25 Update Valuation Act, Article Eight, the Police Department State and Federal Matching Grants, Article Nine, National Opioid Settlement Program Funds, Article Eleven, uh, the FY25 Police Station Debt, Article Twelve, FY25 Statistic and Preservation Revenues, and Article Fourteen, the Five-Year Land Use Programs. Um, so, so what we're going to do is vote to put them in to this consent calendar and treat them, um, together. This will require a two-thirds majority vote. Um, if there's any questions, this should be on the question of putting them in the consent calendar themselves, itself. I, I, I would need a motion.
Mr. Moderator, make the motion that we vote Article Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, Eleven, Twelve, and Fourteen into a consent calendar for a consolidated vote.
Okay, discussion?
And discuss these, the group of all of these articles are, are articles that we vote every year. It's really a housekeeping matter. Um, most of the, most of the amounts don't even change. Uh, we can certainly answer any questions within the articles, just to speed up the process.
Great. Um, so if you have any questions at this time, we're going to vote on, this is the vote to put these all in the consent calendar. Um, if you have any questions, it should be in regards to that motion. We're going to vote again for the articles themselves. Yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town support all of the articles in the consent calendar and have to do with financial improvement.
Sorry, sorry, but we're not, we're not talking about whether casting them, we're talking about literally them in the consent calendar to pass. So, is there any discussion regarding putting it in the consent calendar itself? Is that what you're addressing? Yes?
I, I want to...
David, sorry, the...
Michelle Allen, what? One Jill Robb.
Thank you.
I have a question on, um, sorry, Article Nine, which is the opioid money. From what I read on the warrant, it looks like you want to put that in the police operating budget, and so I want to talk about that because I don't think that's where the money should end up going.
Okay, so, um...
So I don't want that in the consent calendar.
Okay, okay, um, thank you. So we have, somebody's speaking against putting that article in the consent calendar so that we can treat it separately. Um, do we have any other discussion? So we're going to, we're going to take Nine out, and we're gonna vote on the rest, put the rest in the consent calendar. Okay, um, I'm opening the vote. And I'm closing the vote. Alright, two-thirds majority have, have, uh, passed the consent calendar. It will now be treated as one article. Um, so we're going to have the motions read for Five, Six, Seven, Eight, um, Eleven, Twelve, and Fourteen, starting with Five.
Article Five, I move to town vote to appropriate funds provided to the town by the Commonwealth for so-called Jack and ninety-type money, and such other funds as the Commonwealth and Massachusetts Department of Transportation, including its Highway Division, may provide and authorize the Select Board to enter with the contracts with the Mass Department of Transportation, including the Highway Division, for so-called Jack and ninety-type money, and such other funds allocated to the town for fiscal year twenty-five.
Any, um, any discussion?
Politically established formally, the amount of funding and municipality received is based on local road mileage, which for us is fifty-eight point three-three percent, population twenty-two eight-three percent, and employment twenty-two eight-three percent. Local road mileage is gathered from mass daily road inventory, prior population data collected using, uh, decennial census data from the United States Census Bureau. Employment figures are provided by the Mass Department of Unemployment Assistance. Mendon's Chapter Ninety, FY24 is, uh, two-seventy-four, FY25 is two-seventy-four, nine-point-four. Total accepted road mileage is fifty-six, five, and two-hundred. So fifty-six point oh-two. Article Six, all the town vote to raise and appropriate ten thousand one hundred dollars to fund the FY25 portion of the Assessors' Cyclical Inspection Program.
Second.
Discussion, Department of Revenue mandates accounts for completing inspection of all properties every nine to ten years. Mendon assessors complete the process every five years. In order to avoid having to budget the entire month for five years, a consistent portion is transferred annually into this account to ensure sufficient balance to complete the process as planned. The amount approved, uh, in FY24 was sixty-five million.
Next, please.
Article Seven, I move to town vote to raise and appropriate nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars to fund the FY25 portion of the updated operation count.
Second.
The amount last year was seventeen hun- seventeen thousand.
Article Eleven, please, we have some make the CPA. Read the motion. Thank you.
I would recommend that the town transfer total of one-hundred-one thousand dollars and three-hundred-and-fifty-five from CPA accounts to fund FY25 Police Station Debt exclusion, the sixty thousand coming from CPA disturbed preservation account, and forty-one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars from CPA budget for certain young residents.
Second. Article Twelve, eight, oh wait, pick that. Can we skip eight, sorry, eight, please?
I move to town vote to transfer from free cash thirty-five hundred dollars from Police Department State and Federal General Matching Grants in FY25.
Second.
In order to obtain a number of different grants from the police department, we must spend a certain minimum matching amount. The exact numbers vary from year to year depending on what the state makes available. However, we typically need at least as much to make maximum use of what the state offers in any particular year. The amount approved in FY24 was twenty-one.
Back to Article Twelve.
I move to recommend that the town set aside the later spending from the FY25 Community Preservation Revenues, ten percent, six-four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars for open space, ten percent, six-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven for historic preservation, ten percent, six-four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven, or a voting housing, sixty-five percent, four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand and twenty-three dollars for veterans served, and five percent, thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars for administration and several.
Thank you. Um, discussion?
This is required by the state.
Article Fourteen, Article Fourteen, the Land Use Program.
First, we recommend that the town, um, upgrade Mendon's Five-Year Land Use Program publicly, that available to the town, third, off of the town website, and that's a vote.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Um, now we have a Finance Committee recommendation on all of the articles listed here.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town support all of the articles in the consent calendar.
Thank you. Alright, now do we have discussion on the consent calendar? Any articles to attend? Questions, anything? Alright, seeing no one, I am going to call the vote. It opened it. Okay. Yeah, so I could finish circling yes on all these motions. Right. And I do close the vote. It's passed by a two-thirds majority. Alright, moving on, Article Two.
I move to town vote to fix the salaries and compensations of the elected officials of the town for FY25 as follows in ISO voting.
Discussion? And do we, can we pull it up? Oh, okay, we are.
So, for the salaries for the elected officials, we have, uh, Board of Health Chairman at two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, Board of Health Number Two, one-hundred-and-seventy-five, Board of Health Number Three, one-hundred-and-seventy-five, Planning Board Chairman, two-hundred-and-twenty-five.
Helen? Sorry, just, just interrupt really quick. If anybody wants to discuss any of these further as we get to that line item, please yell out hold, and we'll come back to it after we're done with reading through them. Thank you. Now we can hit it.
Planning Board Chairman, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Planning Board each member, two, three, four, and five, and one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars each. Selectment Chairman, two-thousand-two-hundred. Selectment Member, two, three, four, and five, two-thousand dollars each. Board Assessors, Member One, three-hundred dollars. Board Assessors, Number Two, three, and two-hundred-and-fifty dollars each. Moderator, one-hundred dollars. Town Clerk, seventy-three thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Tree Warden, three-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
What was?
Town Clerk, seventy-three thousand five-hundred-and-forty-four.
Tree Warden?
Tree Warden, five dollars.
Thank you. Rick? Do you have any further debate on this? No, I'm going to, I'm going to vote, and I will open the vote. I'm just going to say, since he read them, that, that is the Finance Committee recommendation, that that's correct. That would be correct. Thank you. Alright, Article Three.
I move to town vote to transfer twenty thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars in free cash that they billed for prior year ISO voting.
Thank you. Discussion?
This unfulfilled bill is for disability insurance from fiscal year twenty-three that because of a clutter bill error, uh, the agent never sent us the bill to the bill until after the last town meeting, so this is the first opportunity to take the vote and pay it. We still owe it, the money that had been appropriated and went down into free cash, uh, which is why we're taking from free cash to pay the bill that we still owe.
Thank you. Um, do we have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town support Article Three.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have any debate? So please come to the microphone. Alright, I'm going to open the vote. Alright, we have new, five more seconds. Yeah, votes in the vote count. And the vote passes by a majority.
It's four-fifths.
Yeah.
It's about four-fifths.
Yes, it passes by a four-fifths majority, um, which is what this requires to take out of those vote priority. Okay, alright, Article Four, the budget, um, we're going to have, we have a budget up, up behind us? Yes, thank you. So, Article Four, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to town vote to raise and appropriate the son's money against rent, under Article according to prey fiscal year twenty-five charges and expenses. All the town, including debt managers, are going to provide for a reserve fund that needs to be in year in ISO voting.
Thank you, and, um, just to be clear, as we're reading through budget, if we get to a line item and you'd like to discuss more, please say hold, and we'll come back to it at the end of, at the end of the reading. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, the FinCon Chair is going to read the, um, office of practice of the government by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee, um, have a recommendation on this before?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town support it.
Thank you. Wait, and it's read through.
Yeah, can you bring up revenues? Alright, so as folks can read through in the book, we'll start with revenues. On the total rating by property taxes, we have a total of twenty million five-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand one... On the total rating by property taxes, we have a total of $20,552,173. For local receipts, $2,854,51. State aid, $598,209. And total transfer from other funds, negative $23,545. For a total revenue, a total of $23,988,988. On the expenditure side, Town Moderator total of $100. Select Board total of $368,500, these are expenditures. Finance Committee total of $3,000. Finance Committee Reserve total of $21,330. Accountant total of $79,250. Assessors total of $97,650. Finance Department total, $206,366. Legal Department total, $80,000. Human Resources total, $42,250. Information Systems Technology total, $186,750. Town Clerk total, $86,774. Elections total, $31,180. Conservation Commission total, $92,150. Landing total, $94,350. Zoning Field Board, $27,450. Other land use, $3,050. Public Building and Property Maintenance, $152,950. Police Department, $1,934,649. Fire Department total, $1,310,887. Inspection Services, $125,300. Civil Defense and Emergency Management, $7,750. Forestry, $51,790. Dispatch, $159,100. Animal Control, $29,750. Mendenham Regional School District, $11,46,827. Blackstone Valley Regional Tech, $1,374,882. Norfolk Yaggy, $356,577. For a total education budget of $12,778,286. Highway and Streets, $744,600. Snow and Ice Removal, $194,000. Street Lighting, $43,000. Waste Collection, $681,200. Water Distribution, $32,050. Cemetery, $100. Board of Health Total, $111,600.
Check back, hold on. So, we have hold on waste collection? Okay. We'll get to that at the end.
Council on Agent, $169,310. Veteran Services, $39,150. Library, $329,500. Recreation, $12,000. Parks Total, $95,550. Historic Commission, $4,000. Retirement Debt, $779,000. Interest on Long-Term Debt, $99,000. State Assessments and Charges, $6,800. Retirement Pension Contributions, $1,128,000. Workers' Compensation, $26,000. Unemployment Compensation, $3,000. Health Insurance, $1,176,366. Life Insurance, $25,000. Medicare, $60,450. Other Insurance, $75,000. Liability Insurance, $138,500. Total Benefits Insurance, $2659,360. We get a total FY25 operating value of $23,988,988. If we were paying attention, that equals our revenue. So we have a balanced value for FY25. The Finance Committee recommends supporting.
Right, now we had a hold on waste collections. Stand by, I'm under the privacy. I believe there's a separate article that will vote on enterprise for trash. So if whatever it lies, also this is covered. Have an answer? Give it. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Jody Cruz, I serve as your Finance Director. We're going to the expenditure side and you'll also notice it in the revenue side. So the two will offset when we pull both of those components out of the budget and establish a separate, excuse me, waste distribution.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on the budget in this total? Or this particular line item? No, I'm going to alter vote. And I am opening the vote now. When we assemble majority vote, thank you, everyone, about seven more seconds. And I'm closing the vote. Passes by a majority. All right. Moving on to Article 9, if we pulled out a consent agenda.
I move the town vote to transfer $7,500 to the National Opioid Settlement Program Fund for the Police Department budget line item National Opioid Settlement expenses for qualified opioid remediation programs in ISO.
Discussion?
The town amended a party for litigation involving drug manufacturers. And per the settlement agreement, proceeds for many settlements must be approved by the town meeting produced by law enforcement toward programs targeting opioid use. The amount for FY25 is the same as it was for the last year FY25.
Do we have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town support Article 9.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion or debate on this? Please get up to the microphone.
So now, who would want to be crossing? My question is, it appears you're putting it in the operating budget. And with the National Opioid Settlement, you have to go out of quarters every year and spend it on things to do with opioid. If they don't use all of the money, it's going to roll back to free cash. Whereas if you put it in a special article, if you don't get to use all of the money, then it's available for the following year. I'm just wondering why you're not putting it in a special article.
Do you have an answer for that?
It occurs that level up, please. So this doesn't go back to free cash, it can't by state law. This is designated pretty much for a settlement. A settlement that we have for opioid abuse from the drug manufacturers. So what we have to do is put this money back into some type of substance abuse program. Currently, I'm working with Conrocks and we have a regional task force. And what we do is, we have clinician. Clinician is available to the town in Mendenham. So we have a drug overdose, or something happened, we call up the next day with clinician. If we can't at the time, we have clinician come out. Someone who's experienced in substance abuse. So that's what this money is used for. And there's specific things on the state guidelines we have to use it for. So it's not part of my operational budget. It's basically just used for substance abuse. And it can't roll back into free cash or the state will take it back. So the goal is to use it each year with our regional contacts and use the services of the town and our regional neighbors. So that we all combine our money together. So each time, the town is receiving a certain amount. And with that, those amounts together is enough to actually have a clinician that all the towns can use by. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, comments?
Moderator, I just wanted to clarify that. He was stating that the whole $7,500 is going to be used by the end of the fiscal year. Am I correct in that assumption?
That's good, that's good. You're that trick change? Yes, that's correct. Okay. Any, if there's no other discussion of this, I'm going to open the vote, which I would do so right now. Give five more seconds. And we'll take the vote. Passes by majority. Right. Thank you. Moving on, Article 10, Select Board.
I move the town vote to transfer $50,000 from free cash to the FY25 Finance Committee Reserve Fund account ISO.
Second.
This represents a supplemental funding to finance, to fund Finance Committee reserves generally executed in the fall of special town meeting. The amount requested will allow the Finance Committee to approve unanticipated and unforeseen expenditure by municipal departments with any surplus remaining at the end of the fiscal year, point back into free cash the next fiscal year.
I just want to clarify, on your motion, you said 25, FY25. The one on the screen says 24, which one is correct?
25.
25, all right. We just get the motion change up there, 25? Thank you. Do we have a Finance Committee recommendation on this?
Mr. Moderator, there's a correction on my, that was a mistake for me. It's actually, this is actually the $50,000 that's being moved to vote for the last 60 days of this fiscal year. So it is FY24, it is the current fiscal year, right?
We can get that changed to 24, please? Thank you. All right. And sorry, we're in the middle of the Finance Committee recommendation, did you say yes?
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that's correct.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this? All right. I am opening the vote. Move free cash to FY24 Finance Committee Reserve Fund. I give us five more seconds. And I am closing. And that passes by majority. Make sure people are still waiting. Definitely good name. Right, Article 13, CPC.
And in the Blackstone Street, I'm not sharing the community reservation. I move to recommend that the town transfer $8,260 from CPA sort of a house loan account to fund the FY25 kind of sort of a housing for the decision.
That's a vote. All right. Thank you. Second, discussion?
This is a person in position that we shared with other towns. Last year, given a grant, we didn't pay anything. The full value is $15,720. But we paid half of it last year and for this year, we didn't pay the other half.
Thank you. Do we have a recommendation from our Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the town, the Finance Committee recommends that the town support Article 3.
Thank you very much. Do we have any discussion on this? Okay, I'm opening the vote. Five more seconds. And closing. Passes by majority. Right. Article 15.
I move the town vote to accept General Wiles, Chapter 44, Section 53, F25 chapters that describe subscriber curb site trash recycling service as an enterprise fund effective FY25 in ISO.
Second.
Discussion?
Vote provides acceptance of state laws allowing the creation of an enterprise fund. Revenue derived from trash and recycling fees does not become part of the town general fund and dedicated only to the purposes set forth in the amendment.
Thank you. It looks like we have to speak to this?
Alan Greenberg, 175 Blackstone Street, member. Alan Greenberg, 175 Blackstone Street, also a member of the Board of Health. The team has been consulting with the other departments, Finance Committee, the Select Board, Town Accountant, Town Tax Collector, Finance Director since October on this issue. This will allow a more accurate accounting of the subscriber funds and management of the program. Subscriber revenue is taken in semi-annually through trash and recycling fees, purchasing of trash diggers, any possible recycling rebates, which there are none at this time. The subscriber rates are set based on a five-year history. That's how we come up with what we feel is all we have to charge. We try to target it as close as we can without going under. The town has three different revenue types. They collect property taxes and excise taxes, the permits and fees, building permits, dog licenses, highway recycling, liquor licenses. And then separate from that, they have subscriber fees, which funds your trash program. There are also some grants, state and federal, that come our way. The enterprise account will allow the Board of Health to retain the trash and recycling subscriber revenues collected. They will not flow into the general fund at the end of fiscal year. Any retained earnings collected will be used to benefit the subscriber program by offsetting any increases or reduce the effects. At formerly a trash law, you know, hobby of the current time, is an automatic 3% increase every year as a part of the contract. Also, we have a schedule of what we pay to burn the trash at miller rate. It's a collaborative effort that was a long-term agreement. So we can see and predict leftovers costs. The only variable is the tonages that we're walking, which again, that's why we use a five-year history. So if there is any money left over after the end, when all the bills are paid, that money could be used to either reduce or reduce the increase that we're going to see every year. We've been doing this for a while, it's been working pretty good. Would you like to make it that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a Finance Committee recommendation on this?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee didn't officially vote on this article since it didn't happen to include moving the funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Opening the vote. Just give it five more seconds. All right. Closing the vote. Passes by majority. All right, moving on, Article 16. Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise appropriate $681,200 for operating municipal subscriber curb site trash and recycling service enterprise fund in ISO.
Second.
Do you have discussion?
Vote ensure that the trash and recycling user fees collected in FY25 are dedicated to fund the enterprise fund.
Thank you. Do we have a FinCon recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town support Article 16.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? And opening the vote. Opened, open. And then seven more seconds. All right. Vote closed. Passes by majority. Remember, at the end of the night, make sure you turn these in, that's number two. Okay, Article 17.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the following sums of money to operate the water enterprise fund, fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2024, for FY25. Salaries $4,900, contracted services $14,000, expenses $13,700, water infrastructure repairs and replacement fund $26,375, purchase of water $165,000, indirect costs $6,615. Patrol $230,000, primary rate, the follow-up, department receipts $24,098, retained earnings $15,000, transfer from special particle, uh, back on May 6th, 2016, uh, nine, $10,202 and ISO 1.
Second.
Great, um, discussion?
The FY25 Water Department Enterprise Fund budget is included in this article, including salaries, expenses, purchase of water, indirect costs and replacement fund. And it's important to point out that these monies come from the rate payers who, uh, who own town water. Um, it doesn't come out of revenue or tax revenue, it's from the rate payers who actually use water through the water system.
Very much. Do we have a thing, Tom, recommendation on this?
Just moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town support Article 17.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. I am going to open the vote. Vote is now open. Give it three more seconds. Vote is closed. And you pass it by majority. Right, Article 18.
Just moderator, I move that the town vote to set the limits on the revolving funds for FY25 in accordance with Mass General, uh, law, chapter 53, E, section 25, as well. Revolving fund library $6,000 limit, planning board $30,000 limit, highway revolving fund $25,000 limit, conservation revolving fund $25,000 limit, parks department revolving fund $165,000 limit, fire department revolving fund $10,000 limit, title five water health, $25,000 limit, and police department revolving fund $15,000 limit and ISO 1.
Second.
Thank you, discussion?
The amount of revolving fund shown, uh, are identical to the FY24 revolving fund limits.
Thank you, um, Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Just moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town support Article 18.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Right. I am opening the vote. I'm now closing the vote. It passes by majority. Article 19.
Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer $35,000 from free cash to fund retirement payout for municipal employees and ISO 1.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion?
Town seeks funding to compensate employees who separate service with undue vacation and unfortunately their end-of-simply. On forward, the town will look to fund an account in order to minimize the impact on the town budget, by its unexpected nature of employee retirements.
Okay, um, do we have any new recommendation?
Just moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town support Article 19.
All right, um, any discussion? Opening the vote, if not, it does not appear to be, so the vote is open. Five seconds. Vote closed. Passes by majority. Okay, Article 21.
Just moderator, I move the town vote to transfer $250,000 from the sale of town-owned land to undertake road improving capital projects and determined by the Select Board, ISO 1.
Second.
Any, uh, discussion?
This request represents supplemental funding to chapter nine estate funds to be utilized for road repairs. This is a recommendation of the Capital Planning and Working Group to provide multi-year supplemental funding as an investment in a recently completed payment growth survey. The source of funding, land sales, can only be utilized for capital projects.
Right, Finance Committee?
Just moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town support Article 19.
Thank you very much. Uh, vote is open. I'm, I'm opening vote. We missed, there's discussion, I don't think there is. I leave them alone, but now the vote's open. And now the vote's closed. Whenever I screw it by, I'm beating the gavel hard. I'll play the table with your names in tag by the end. Be the big stuff. Um, all right, Article 21, something tells me this one might be a little popular. I'm not sure that I should buy that, yeah. Um, Article 21 Select Board.
Just moderator, I move that the town appropriate and borrow $13,200,000 for the designing construction of the Bendon Senior and Community Center. Including costs incidental, incidental thereto, be located on town-owned property of 3 North Avenue and shown on assessors parcel number 8-189-3, consisting of 20.96 acre, more or less. And authorize the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, as authorized by General Laws, chapter 44, section 71. Or any other general or special law for a period not to exceed 30 years, provided, however, that this appropriation and debt authorization be contingent upon the passage of a proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion question, General Laws, chapter 59, section 21, C-King. Any premium received by the town from the sale of any bonds or notes authorized by this vote, less than the cost of issuance of the bonds or notes paid from the premium, and any approved interest, may be applied to pay project costs according to the General Laws, chapter 44, section 20. Any amount authorized to be borrowed to pay those costs shall be reduced by the same round applied and ISO 1.
Second.
Thank you. Before we start discussion, I, I think that some people are going to want to speak on this. Um, please start lining up in front of the microphones, if you wish to do so. Um, and then we're going to move to discussion. Move the Select Board. Okay, and we, we have presentation on this as well. Again, if you want to speak on this, please line up in front of the microphones, so that we can start to kind of tally how many people are going to be allowed to speak on this.
I've got simply seven Nelson Park, and I'm not truthful.
Thank you.
Uh, next slide, please. We're going to talk about a few things this evening. One's going to be needs, uh, the current facility, the ask, the design and how we got here. It's a history, the benefits for the community, as well as the possible grants and under support we have going forward. Uh, the first thing I'll just summarize quickly, the existing facility is undersized and inadequate for the delivery of services for our senior personnel. In addition, I think as we're looking through the, uh, it's a single source, uh, singles, single event, uh, activity, meaning that we can't run two simultaneous events at once at one time. The buildings are restricted, uh, anywhere for two or three times a day, which requires staff and people, and reduces the ability to provide services for the community. This is not just a senior center, it is also a community center being proposed, and there's a lot of benefit, uh, multi-calorational benefit we can use. The ask, I think, is simple enough, we're going to look for the town's people's support. Uh, we've all earned 13.2 million. The effective impact to the current tax rate, based on the numbers from the Finance Committee, on a $500,000 assessed value, be approximately $150 per year. And, uh, design and history, we'll go through with, uh, Mike, the benefits will come back and recap and summarize, and we'll go on. Next slide, please. Uh, I want to focus on the left-hand side here of the community for a minute. Here we talk about the fact that that center is also the emergency shelter for the town, that currently has the capability to handle about 25 to 35 people. Uh, it's inadequate for the size of the town, and this shelter will have facilities and capabilities to handle our needs. It also is the food pantry for the town, uh, which, uh, provide services not only to the senior centers, senior citizens, but all the citizens in town. It supports veterans, VNA, it's a meeting place for town organizations, it'll be a family outreach area towards support, most apparently it'll be a place for people to congregate. Uh, not only clubs, but also townspeople could use the facility. Evening programs will be implemented, and, uh, we'll continue to do, uh, recreation activities, but in a broader sense. Working with the CPA, funds and parks and rec, we're looking at establishing two pickleball courts, basketball courts, shopping ward, bouncy court. And ADD, ADA compliant walking trails, is a goal. Anne will speak to that later, she has a recommendation to come in, to look at ADA compliant trails and where it can put us. And I think this town desperately needs those. Our current walking group doesn't walk in this town. They walk in Milford, they walk in Blackstone, they walk in any town around us, because there are no ADA compliant trails in this town. That's not for senior centers at all. That's, uh, seniors, that's for also people with handicaps. Uh, Dave, you may want to touch upon some of those numbers there? I'll continue on, I'm sorry. Uh, again, here's just a recap of the numbers, broken down to the finer granularity. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Mike Petrovic, who's a design architect, we've been working with for a number of years. And he'll go through the basics of his companies, and also his work he performed.
Thank you, Phil. As Phil mentioned, my name is Mike Petrovic. My firm is Michael Petrovic Architects. We have offices in Amesbury, Massachusetts, and Keene, New Hampshire. Um, I bring about 35 years' experience, uh, doing this, 20 years of public projects. Um, for this particular project, and we'll get into, I'll get into what we did and how we got there, uh, but we involved my firm, we involved DNL Design Group, who helped us with some site design. And we involved PMNC, which has 20 years of cost estimating, and I'm going to talk a little bit about, uh, what we did and how we got here tonight. Next slide, please. So our firm, uh, again, uh, 40 years of experience, uh, municipal, commercial, industrial, historic preservation, residential, sustainable design, I'm also an adjunct professor of architecture at Keene State College. So we've done other senior centers, uh, you'll see that, uh, my firm actually, when I was in a partnership, started this project, and then my business partner and I went our own ways, and I kept this project, but the town came back to me to continue working for them. And you'll see there's a couple of senior centers there, and a fire station. So we've got municipal experience, uh, we understand how to do these projects. Next slide, please. So as all these projects start, uh, you, you have to put a stake in the ground somewhere. What are we going to build, what is going to cost, and what is it roughly going to look like? And what is going to be in that building? So our, what this does is it's conducted to determine project viability, uh, is the project possible? Is the project practical? Is the project financially viable? Uh, the research involved is site selection. You'll see that we started this project looking at doing something where the existing center is, then we looked at other sites in town. Uh, we evaluated those sites, the committee made some decisions, and we'll talk about that in a bit. Uh, we looked at chara- characteristics of the sites selected and how they affect the project and how they affect the, the cost of the project. Compliance with zoning and land use rules, building programming, the committee investment, hours and hours of time, on looking at what do they need from a council engagement standpoint in the senior center to serve this community. Preliminary conceptual building and site design, technical aspects of the building, you know, how is the building heated, how is it cooled? We haven't designed any of this, we apply these, these, these factors and look at systems that we'd have in there, and say, this is what the building would, would have in it, and that's how we arrive at a cost analysis. The benefits of doing all this is you have uniform decisions, and you have to discover unknowns, and we discovered a few of those along the way, um, and that's a good thing. Next slide, please. So what did the feasibility study look like for the men in senior center? Well, it started in 2014, so that was 10 years ago. Uh, it started with a, a survey of use and need. In 2018, they issued an RFP, um, my firm, um, my previous firm, a partnership, uh, started working with the senior center and did a design with a cost analysis, and it was determined at that time that it was probably a little bit aggressive. So in 2021, we started doing that again, and at this point, I had my own firm, so I was doing this with the, with my team and the, the committee. And we looked to reduce the scope and just, why don't we just try expanding the existing senior center? And we looked at that and the cost analysis that we prepared, and it was still a very expensive proposition. That building has lived its life, and it's very hard to work with it, it's on a very challenging site, and it's not in a great location. So in 2024, we had some new members at the committee, uh, Phil got involved in the project, and we just, they decided to have us start again and look at our program, but look at putting it on some other sites in town, and really, what does the CA, COA need for now and into a little bit of the future? We never want to build too far into the future, because then you might be overbuilding. So we studied, uh, completed to relocate the senior center to replace, they looked at several sites, and they arrived at the one we're going to talk about tonight. Um, then we had input from us, the civil engineers, et cetera, programming updated to reflect current and some contributive, we talked about that in a minute, and we hired, we had PMNC do a full cost analysis based on today's construction cost. Next slide, please. So this is the North Avenue 16 site, uh, across from the school, um, we, we're using part of the site, not the whole site. Uh, we looked at, uh, all the items that Phil mentioned, and how do we incorporate those on the site? And so we came up with this design. What this will allow is that that roadway could be continued and extended if the site is going to be used for other uses for the town. There's also access to this site on Route 16 further down. Next slide, please. So we look at a program of spaces, and we worked with Amy and the, uh, folks at the senior center and the committee, and what do they really need in the senior center? And we've done, my firm has done many senior centers, my previous business partner has done about 50. And so we've, over time, understanding what, what uses a senior center needs, what the spaces are, and based on your community and how many people could use those spaces, et cetera, and we came up with a building that's approximately, uh, 11,600 square feet. Next slide, please. And so we looked at, how do we fit that into a building that's fairly reasonable, um, for the flow, and how do we access the building, and how do people use the building, move through the building? We have a couple of large spaces in the building, uh, a large multipurpose room you see on the upper right there. Uh, we've got, um, a li- a library space, or, or reading space, a quiet space, there's a small kitchen. Then we, because the site slopes, instead of building a second story, we go to a lower level, because we get that as a, we call it a lockout basement, if you will. Another multipurpose room with a separate entrance, so that it could be used by the community, locking off the rest of the senior center if they needed to. Um, the food pantry is there, outdoor space, et cetera. So, um, we did this as a very, as kind of an economical, we do a lot of trial and error, what's the most economical approach to this? And obviously, we want a building that looks nice, so we don't want to do just a square And obviously, we want a building that looks nice, so we don't want to do just a square box because square boxes get pretty boring. They are a little bit cheaper built, but again, we have a nice site. Menon's a nice town, so we want to do something that's a little bit vernacular for the town. So next slide, please. So we came up with a building that looks like this. We modeled this after a farmhouse. We tried not to overstretch the design so that it looks like a farmhouse that somebody put an air pump on and blew it up. We tried to keep it in a nice scale so that it's easy to look at, easy to use, easy to maintain, and yet provides the space in the building. So this looks like a farmhouse with a wall attached to it, which is very something we've all seen before. And I think, in my experience of being an architect, anyway, people love it. As much as I try to take them to modern architecture, this is where they want to be. So that's what we'll do. Next slide, please. And these are the renderings of it. So addition to those 2D views of it, we do some 3D rendering. So this should be the approach to the building. The entrance, you see the barn piece behind it. It's quite nice on the site. I think if you come up Route 16 or North Avenue, you'll see this facility would be quite beautiful. Not over scaled, not too big. Next slide, please. And that's the lower side. You see the lockout, the lower level entrance to a deck off the multipurpose room, the pickleball courts, et cetera. Thank you. Oh, yeah. So I'm sorry. Next slide, please. Oh, yeah, you want to, we have to have a several. We have to take, you work here, it's done. I get to do a bunch of stuff. So as we look at this, we use, we use cost, we use cost that's real. So these are projects that are being done on a daily basis. And so they're projects that are here today. And so we looked at a couple of options. We had, the original design was much bigger. We decided to do some restraint and be a little more responsible. So we're looking at the column design 3.1 on the right. And so we have our basic building construction site. We have a three-way garage allowance for the vans, some of the storage of medical goods. And those total about $9,200,000. Then we start adding the cost of doing this. So we have contingencies. Contingencies are in there as an insurance policy. We're here today in May 2024. This thing is going to move forward. We have a schematic design, a conceptual design. There's work that has to be done to prove this thing out of it. So we carry contingencies for design and pricing, and that's above $1.1 million. They're standard percentages that they would carry. General conditions is what's the cost to do this building from just basic requirements, basic cost to, for a contractor to do the building. Contractor then has to get bonded. It's a municipal project. Massachusetts requires a bond. There has to be insurance on the project while it's being built. We have permit fees. Even though we are a municipality, we still have to pay some permit fees to the state, even locally. And so then we have overhead and profit, which is a standard number. That's another contractor number that's in there. And we end up at $12,639,000. And then we have the owner's contingency. So the owner carries another contingency, it's an insurance policy of, oh, we forgot this. So we would like to have that. That's a number that's in there. Now, as the design goes on, that sometimes stays, sometimes it goes. It depends on how well the project develops. Then we have engineering and design and F and E. So we've done the conceptual design. We have to do construction documents and really design this out with a structural engineer, chemical engineer, structural engineer, plumbing, and all of those. This building is also a sustainable building. It's a high-efficiency building using non-fossil fuel heating and cooling. And so we end up with an estimate there of 15.2 million. And then we have a couple of things. We might look at some siding substitutions, whether we use a really high-end vinyl or whether we use hardy. We don't want to put wood siding on this because that's a maintenance issue. And then we want to potentially do a solar array, PV array, so that we can power all of that heat pump, heating, cooling from the sun. And then we have a cost of building the roadway into the site of about $1 million. So we end up at $13.1 million or $13.2 million.
Just I had a couple of points to this, through this process. Mike talked about comparing the 14.9 to the 13.2. Our first criticism was somewhere around 17.4. And if you look at the contingency pieces, why are we comparable with these prices? An estimate is that the contingency is about 12% for construction at $1.2 million. And effectively, in talking with some of our peers, if we manage this budget correctly, and our fellows over in Upton ran around 7% to 8% of their contingency. So I'd like to try to charter us to try to do the same. Our whole goal was to keep it at this price or lower. It has inflationary factors, looking at building starting in 2025 and not starting today. And the other factor to keep in mind, people say, why is it so expensive now? Regulations have gotten more stringent. And since the time we looked at this originally, the construction inflation cost went up 24%. Each year, it goes up an additional 5% to 8%. So as building, as we make our decisions, the cost is another 5% to 8% per year. Next slide, please. I'm just going to say one thing. This is what we get for this building, for the seniors and the community. It provides a full range of services. It gives multi-use capabilities so you can do programs. You can imagine, you could have an after-school program with the Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts, and I was a deputy, so I understand this, in this building downstairs while you're running senior center activities upstairs. You added a basketball court paid through the CPA funds that desperately need, and there's no room up at the field to put them in. Because we're putting it in at new construction, we're grading it, we're preparing the ground, we're saving money there. A lot of work's gone into this for the past many years, but over the past 18 months. And I think this is where we're landing. Next slide, please. Just to let you know, our work hasn't finished, but we need a project to continue. There's earmark work activities going on that the select force is working with. We have that at the federal level. We're on top of the top 15 choices potentially for federally earmarked. No guarantees, but we put in for 13 million, we might get $500,000 or $1 million, or nothing. It's election year. We can't wait for that. We do have some support, though, from Representative Burry, who has $100,000 to go to this. We have some support from Fadman and his team, came in today, supporting the effort. All those funds and support we get, once we have a project, including fundraising, can reduce our debt liability, our debt exposure. And that's the goal behind this. But if we don't have a project, we can't collect money. Roots behind this, I think, the FinCon Board, Board of Selectmen, other organizations that have also supported this, outside organizations, Lions, Brothers, and many citizens. And I ask you all to try to support this project. And if there are any other questions, next slide, Matt's question.
Thank you very much. Before, me and I did not have our FinCon recommendation, but we have a FinCon recommendation.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends that the town support Article 21.
Thank you very much. And if anybody has questions, please line up by the mics. Questions, comments, concerns?
I'd like to check in for us, so could we find more down? I have two questions. One is, just to clarify in that budget, the 13.2 million does not include photovoltaic? Solar, does not include the solar panels? Right, those are...
You're saying it does? No, I don't think so.
Solar grants, when they approach, and we still get the, and you notice the bottom, the solar will pull up a bit. If we get the solar grants, which is a high probability if we have a project, I believe we could add that too. But it's based on our approach of minimizing cost to the community and then go aggressively after grants and funding. And the building is fully electric, so it can be added onto the facility.
Thank you.
Can you say, do you have a second question?
I did, yes. Was there consideration made to appropriate funds just for further design rather than going to a full construction cost to get a market or estimate?
Yeah, I think, go ahead, Mike.
So from my experience, the only way to do that would be to incorporate about, about a half a million dollars and do a full design. And so, and then at that point, you're, what's guiding the number on that? So what is guiding the cost on that? So you hear this, this way, this is the way most municipalities, most municipal projects happen this way. You have feasibility, that's a, that's a, that's a number you can take to the bank and build the building on. I mean, that's, you know, if you look at, I can't honestly say I've never had one of those. The only one that I think has gone over that wasn't mine that I saw was right at the beginning of COVID, and the community had to go back and ask for a little bit of money. But, I mean, the way Massachusetts governs these, I mean, there isn't, that's, that's there. We have to design that building to that point. And we've done all of the work ahead of time to ensure that that's a good number. It is not, I would not recommend a community professionally spend a half a million dollars to design a building and yet have a set of construction documents that they may not be able to use. That's not a good use of money, in my opinion.
Is that answer your question?
It does. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess partially, at least, I was wondering if the committee itself had considered that.
Thank you.
We did consider that. And one of the things we were worried about is if we go on to another design cycle, we're still in it. The whole chain of OPM, construction companies, and everything else. And that would defer us another probably 12 months. If we defer an additional 12 months, the inflationary factor on the 13.2 is about a million plus, excuse me, $500,000 plus. So that, it's a trade-off. And all you're doing is delaying the cycle and the cost will up. It should be noted, though, the company in the firm is not Mike's firm who put the cost estimates together. An independent costing firm looked at this, specializing in construction cost, and they came in with numbers that were extremely high. Not extremely high, but, I mean, accurate, they're good, they're solid. They're not a design dream, they're a construction company's estimate dream. So I think these are solid numbers. We did look at that. But the cost you're chasing at that point. And what cost is $500,600,000 to build a design which will defer another year?
Thank you. I'm just, request that speakers, please get closer to their microphone when speaking so that everyone can hear you. Thank you very much.
David Kersey, Level, Police Chief, also the vice chair of the committee. So the previous speaker, I was on a committee with him to build the police station. I think I know where his concerns are coming from. That was our first step at really being professional and managing our debt services and trying to be appropriate with the buildings we're building in this town. When we did that committee, I learned a lot from it. I think that we were behind the eight ball with municipal projects back then. And our knowledge that we had, our committee was made up of people that didn't have municipal experience needed to build a building. And we relied on the architect, but the architect at the time didn't give us what we got from this architect. I made sure that we weren't going to be sitting around for eight months looking at the plans. The plan you see here is going to be the plan that goes into production. They'll hire OPM, then they'll hire a design team, and that will be the plan for the production. With the police station, we fell behind. Those plans weren't accurate, left them empty. We spent eight months as a committee reading the plans after the project was approved. And then we had to come back for more money for the project. It was a 5.5 million project. We ended up spending 6.5 because we didn't include the due diligence before. And it wasn't our fault. We did what we were supposed to direct it with the architect. But the architect wasn't as good as Mike is here. I mean, I wanted to be in this committee to use my expertise in the last one that we did and make sure that we did things efficiently. And then when we have a number, we don't have to come back to it. And if anything, if we have a number, maybe we can save some money from it. So we need these plans worked at it. We spent a lot of time with the committee over a year just vetting the ones that we have, the designs that we have. So when we, if this gets approved, we hit the road running. And we've been to that police station committee. Again, no fault of anybody, it was a learning experience. But I think, you know, we've learned from our past buildings. And the police station, I want to just tie it into this topic of the two building committees. Back then, you notice that 2018 is when the senior center started their serious study to bring this building forward. That's because then the select board is the select board is now. It's trying to manage our debt level, which is different than our operational level. Every town carries a certain amount of debt. And that debt is a debt that goes off. It's a two-and-a-half debt exclusion. You have a bond that lasts for a certain amount of bond time. If you want to maintain that debt level so you can invest in your community, and every town around you has a certain level that they invest in, and you watch that debt level, and you find a time to plug that project. When debt drops off, you should put another project into it to maintain that so you don't spike any of your taxes. Your taxes stay pretty level because of that. Your taxes will always go up on the operational side to the two-and-a-half, but you want that level to stay, maintain. We have something dropping off now. That's a time to move within. We had something dropping off in 2018. That's why we moved the police station in. And if this passes, you should plan your next project in the town and figure out when the next debt drops off. So it isn't a huge impact on the service communities. So that's kind of how it ties in with the last committee that we did. It ties into each building. So the next building, hopefully, that the voice targets will do the same thing, get committee members, and be more efficiently tax-free.
Thank you. I'm going to alternate between microphones. We had someone speak from that one, then we had this one. Can you move back to the right microphone? Sir, if you want, if you would, what? Go. Sir, you can go ahead.
Joseph Lawley, 18 buildings online. Would you mind putting the job cost breakdown up on this screen?
Can you move back to that?
I just had a question. I noticed the site is a pretty solid chunk of the budget. What's driving the cost of the site? Can you talk a little bit more to that, kind of maybe the risk factors that we know and maybe you all know?
So the reason why that number ties is because we addressed everything, so there isn't much we don't know. And one thing about this building is it needs, do we have a sprinkler system in it? And what we have to do is store water underground to run that sprinkler system. We also have to put in septic. And do we have to put in water, or we have to put in water too here? So therefore, you've got to space all that stuff out. We've got site development costs for the courts and all that sort of thing. And so there's a significant amount of explanation. We have a lot of paving, private parking. So we did pull the roadway out just a little bit. So I think that is an accurate number. I just did a project similar to this, and that's spot on.
Is it a fair assumption that most of the heavy lifting for the site prep for possibly future developments, it's going to be done for that site portion? Or will there be additional?
So the work provided, the only thing that will be in there is the roadway to continue the roadway to other projects that might be in there. Septic, well, and sprinkler water are all necessary.
Then I guess, maybe for the committee, it's about a 5% contingency. You mentioned Upton was maybe pushing close to 8%.
This one's 12%.
12%?
12%. If you're looking to line up their Zion and Rice contingency, 1.2 million, okay.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I bet off.
It's 12%. They came in on 7% or 8% on their recent project, which was about 23 million.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Let me have someone over here. Gentlemen? Kevin Reddy, 46, Cape Road. One of them totally is supportive of this because I know if we responded, the cost will double approximately every five or six years, the way cost has been going up. But I also want to remind the folks here, with the exception of salaries and building maintenance, this is the first town-wide funding of something for the seniors. I go back in time to when Cower Lowell was the half a day a week senior coordinator in the boiler room of the basement town hall. That was the town's first effort in the mid to late 80s for seniors. The current building was built totally by volunteers. The addition to it was built totally by volunteers in the west of town. The only things that we, the taxpayers, could pay for was eventually we went to a full-time director. Then we got a part-time assistant. I wrote the grant that got the outreach coordinator in at part-time, and eventually that got transferred to the town. But after... But after 40 years of living in this town, this is the first time you all have been asked to do something, and this is for the seniors because it's down to community center, to build something like this. Okay? And I was involved with the 2014 survey when I was on the Council of Asia and I looked closely at what these folks had done. And as a professional assessor, I know where building costs are going. They've done the right project, sized for the town, it looks right for the town. I also was on the library building committee, it was contrary to previous speaker, detriment professionally going under budget. But we got a lot of flack on that building because we were given a building, the old church, they given a budget and we both let that budget and that building support it. We got a lot of flack, they didn't look right for the town. This looks right for the town and I would urge everybody to support it. I'm now a senior, I'm retired many years, I don't like paying more taxes, but this is one thing I will pay taxes for because I know that everybody in the community will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Indiana speaker over on the other microphone, sir?
Vincent Roy, Unjueled Crossing. I'm part of the project, right in front. I just wanted to say, I'm just in the industry, so I don't really tell a lot of the information to say, but the one concern that I do have are probably concerns. I thought the contingency was a little bit low because as you said, you're a conceptual design, I would have thought it should be 15 and 20 because, you know, things are going to, things will be evaluated as you design, maybe some changes will happen and you're going to get something during the design and the other factor that you didn't have the OPM listen up here. I'm just afraid that in a year from now, we're going to go out there on this project and not get enough funding factor, I guess.
So we actually have two contingencies. We have the owners contingency and the design contingency and the total about 17%. Okay? And the other thing is OPM is in design engineering that has it.
Okay. Thank you. A gentleman over on my left.
Jake Ross, 17 Washington Street. Two for our question, is there an estimated annual operating budget and is the FinCom willing to support that ahead of vote?
So your question's not about the, the monetary amount of the article, it's the operating budget for the proposed building?
I, I think that would be, if you'd like to speak to that, go ahead. David Kersey, Level. So we did analysis based on the police station, our cost that went up, what the cost would be operationally for this center and we came up with about $40,000. That's not adding any staff, but I don't know if there is plans for the staff, that'd be the senior director and on top of that, a lot of the staff there is actually volunteers. I've, I've been volunteering there since I've been chief to serve dinners, to serve lunches, to do veterans thing. The one thing with the senior center community is you get a lot of volunteers, we save, we save the temple money operationally for cost, they have employees. So about $40,000 operationally and that's assuming that you don't do solar. So a solar grant comes in, that's going to be able to, so right, and again, if the contingencies come in lower, it could be an option, we need to look at two, it's 175,000 to take that contingency and then make it solar, the long-term effect is going to be savings for the town.
Thank you. Did that answer your question? Okay, thank you. Over on the right, we have another speaker.
Michelle Allen Pope on Joe Crossing. So last year at the annual town meeting, out of the 14 was to fund engineering design or whatever for the existing senior center. I'm just wondering what happened and I don't have what that dollar amount was that we voted on, but what happened to those funds? Were those used to do this or are those still sitting somewhere that you're going to end up putting to this project?
Do we have an answer on that from the committee?
Yeah, the committee took the funds away, approved by the town, and we did, we hired two individuals, by FedEx firm and also an engineering firm to do the study on the location that we decided to pick. And I think we've gone through the fact that we've gone through this building, looked at the expansion and realized that we couldn't achieve our goal from the needs. That's when we opened up and looked at four different sites and we selected the North Avenue 16. Cost is actually, would have been probably higher and it might not be possible to go to our current location after we did all that. But that money that you have approved before paid for the engineering study as well as the design work that we have today to be able to present you with the price back.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on this? No, I, I think I'm going to open the vote. We're going to open the votes and give, let people have a nice long time thinking. And it also needs a two-thirds majority because we're discussing borrowing toward here in order of passing two-thirds. All right, I think I'm closing the vote. Yes, it's by two-thirds. All right, thank you, moving on to the next article. Article 22, Select Board.
Moderator, remove the town vote.
Please, as you need, please turn in your remote. That's number three, I might throw on the bonus one, one later, we'll see. All right, Article 22.
Moderator, remove the town vote to transfer $20,000 from free cash purchase installed generator to support the legacy senior center.
Thank you. Any discussion?
As it indicates, the generator at the existing senior center need to be replaced and if, if, once this is built, the plan for the existing building for the senior center is currently how it is planned to possibly be administrative office for, for highway, for the highway department and it may still be a need for that generator.
Thank you. FinCom?
Mr. Moderator, the FinCom represents the town support.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sir, we have, we have, someone, we, you can just come down to the microphone so people can hear you. What? Can everyone hear the gentleman?
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay, I'll make it louder. Isn't there an office for the highway department?
Sorry, what was your name and address?
I'm sorry. John's or AI Park Street.
Thank you. Oh, we got a microphone for you.
Isn't there already an office for the highway department?
There is, there is a small office with a desk for the, for the admins, it's in the existing garage, but again, that space is actually too cramped for the size of the department. So the idea is that we'll actually be able to provide them a proper workspace and then move the existing, existing next door to that building to the administration.
I think Select Board member Goddard also has something to add?
I think in addition to parks, we're looking at public work.
Will you speak closer to the microphone?
In addition to highway, the parks department does not have a location for housing, equipment and stuff, so we're looking at staff agree to move public work up.
Thank you. Any further points of discussion? Okay, we're moving, move into the vote, vote is open. This is a simple majority. All right, we're going to give it five more seconds. I think your numbers are decreasing all up here. All right, vote is closed. Great, passes by majority. All right, Article 23, CTC.
And they are going to agree. I would recommend that the town transfer 208,000 from the CPA budget reserve account to install two pickleball courts, one viatech court, one basketball court and two shuffleball courts, including class incidental there too at the site of the proposed new senior community center at 3 North Avenue.
Okay, discussion?
This would be passed over if the senior community center doesn't pass at the ballot, but it's voted yes, it would be, these would be constructed when the seniors that are, the community centers are being constructed.
Thank you. Do we have a FinCom recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town support Article 24.
Thank you. Any further points of discussion? Seeing none, I declare the vote open. Okay, give it five more seconds. And vote closed. Passes. Great, Article 24, also CTC.
I would recommend that the town transfer $3,500 from the CPA open space account to hire engineers to design a walking loop trail from 3 North Avenue to 20 Milford Street to 31 Brookview Lane and a separate loop trail from 31, 131 North Avenue to 101 North Avenue to hotel conservation area with partials to include ADA acceptable trails.
Thank you. Discussion?
So this would be for two loop trails, planning for the, the 31 Brookview Lane is privately owned, but it's open space, so we need, you don't get permission obviously from that, those people. The person that owns 131, has agreed to have the trail on their property. And it would start, the, the southern trail would start at the senior center. And that's why we want to include the ADA accessible trails, but also the other trail we would try to include ADA acceptable sections of the trail. And this would go forwards whether or not the senior center, community center gets voted in or not.
Thank you.
There's just one more thing, after we have the, the plans and, you know, are doing it, then we would apply for a transit grant to actually construct the future.
Thank you. FinCom?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town support Article 24.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'm opening the vote. Vote is open. Vote is closed. Great, passes by a majority. Article 25, I believe there's actually, is there a presentation for this one?
Yes.
Okay. We pull up the presentation. Oh wait, yeah, we read the motion and then if we get the presentation pulled up.
I would recommend that the town will transfer $2,500 from the CPA budget reserve accounts to fund design, excavation, purchase of this cost of equipment and installation of a nine open space.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. Also, also is there a FinCom recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee does not recommend the town support Article 24.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the presentation.
So this is my proposal for having disc golf on some of our open space that we've been purchasing of. We have a lot of open space in town, over 600 acres with mostly hiking trails, hunting, there's some biking in some places, but not much for active recreation. So I'm proposing that we install a disc golf course, disc golf, like stick golf is same kind of rules, but instead of a stick, uh, clubs, you would use frisbees and you use it in your natural environment, the folks typically, they can run forests or fields. There is no clear parting of land and we try to preserve the property as it is. So I, at the November town meeting, I had come to the town asking for the design and equipment and was asked to come back to annual town meeting with something more substantial. So I, we, I asked CPA to fund an assessment of some properties that would be suitable for disc golf. We had three properties, I had a professional from the New England Disc Golf Center come in and assess the three properties for their suitability based on the topography, parking facilities and a number, number of other things. We came with, we came upon landing on the Brandon Paddock property, which was recently purchased by the town. There, we are proposing an area of low 15 acres. The area to the front would be reserved for some proposed affordable housing and the area in the back, which is closer to homes, that would be reserved for any future space that the town might need for other recreational activities. So we're going to stay, I guess, this, east of the street, close to the Morrison Drive parking lot and that would, that's where the parking option would be, it would not be off of Front Street. So this is a, oh, sorry. Okay. Being a member of the master plan committee, one of the goals outlined in the action plan for the open space and we saw in the master plan committee is that people want more outdoor recreation available in town instead of having to travel out of town to do these types of activities. This would support the open space and recreation plan and would also support the goals of the master plan made up in the master plan. This is a design in Sandwich with, it's a 18 hole course, we're proposing a nine hole course on 16 acres on conservation land in Sandwich. As you can see, this is the overview, that, that golf course is in there, but they, they preserved most of the trees. So it's not like your traditional disc golf course where you would, there, put up irrigation, have nice pretty plantings. It would preserve the natural beauty of the location. So the cost that we're asking for, the design is 7,000, the equipment is 12,500, the installation is 7,000. Site work, we have an estimate of $36,850 for a total of $63,500. And this would be community preservation funds.
All right, any other points of discussion on this? Please go to the microphones.
There, Jerry Jacobowski's at Aprilburg Court. I live right on the corner there, there's a tremendous amount of wildlife back there and that's up on the beach. It seems quite frivolous to have kind of a new level sort of disc golf activity that we have not, we have continuing. Could you just move a little closer? We have continuing sports around the, the tall fields today and to, how about, like you said, there's no parking here and, you know, there's going to be a lot of congestion if it's, if it's even used at all. And I, I actually worry about the And I, I actually worry about the, the amount of, you know, people taking advantage of that area as well as trashing the big investment, the big investments.
We have something to say though?
Ellen Agro, ten Vincent. In reference to the parking, there is parking, we have a show building that is town owned land, off of Morrison's Drive, and there is parking there. If you are familiar with disc golf, the players stay on the assigned course, they don't wander off into the woods, and they just play their game and they go on. So I don't believe you'll be seeing vandalism. There's a course in Milford that has been in place for about a year and a half now, and according to the park director there, there is no vandalism, there has been no complaints from the police, and it's quite a civilized sport.
Thank you. I'm gonna alternate between mics like we did a while ago, if you would come on and speak. Really quick.
Sure. Um, I've been playing golf for, I don't know, fifteen years, maybe longer, and I enjoy it because if you're in a park-like setting, you get exercise, and, you know, I, I appreciate what the gentleman earlier said about the wildlife, because that's what we're interested in buying. And these, these four, these woods, or land as you usually, pretty much still populated by, by wildlife. But it, it's not a, a new, a new thing, it's been around for a long time. And even, I, I lived in southern states, and every community has a, has one, and the nine holes, even nine holes is, is enough for people to go out and enjoy it. And I think the youth would like it as well. And I just got finished playing eighteen holes in Franklin, it was, yeah, Franklin. And, you know, it, it, it's just a nice court, I get a lot of youth, a lot of people that are twenty, no trash, in fact, you tend to go out to that course and look at it, because it's really nice, and you do a beautiful job, no trash, very happy with it. So, but I'd really like to try that park, look like really far out there. So I, I'm, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa B. Very Formas, Astoria Way. My questions, are there any grants that could be found that would help us out?
Do you have a, 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 a,
I don't know of any grants, but this will be used in CPA funds.
I think Xander Love will ask us for that way. I know there has been some discussion of potential fields at this property. Could someone point out where those could be located on this, uh, re, 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 Dan, Dan Byer, Hunter Two Property, sorry, trying to stop the, 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 the.
Um, so at this time, I don't think there's any concrete plans for field of this property. We absolutely need to look into more fields. We have a number of properties. This course would not block down this property to say we couldn't do fields in the future. I know in particular, there's some cleared areas here that may be suitable for future development, development, and it's right next to the whole entire area. So I don't think by doing disc golf here, we're not preventing future development, and I think when they're on the ground, actually designing exactly where the bathrooms will go, they will be, you know, be sure of these spaces, and it looks like this is a candidate for large usage. Thank you.
And one. And this red outline that's up here, that is only the seventy-three, seventy-five Providence Street. There is actually more land, town owned land or open space, the Applewood Open Space, which may also be used for gift brands. Can?
It could be, yeah.
Carrie Helpman, one mile. I just wanted to say it doesn't really take that long to get to Devil Street in Milford, if one wants to play there.
Right, do we have any other points of discussion, otherwise I'm gonna move into it. This is something that requires a simple majority to pass. And I declare the vote open. Give it five more seconds. Okay? Vote closed. Vote fails by majority. Okay, moving on, Article twenty-six. Page seventeen.
I move to recommend that the town will transfer fifty thousand dollars from CPA budgeted reserve account for lighting attendance for basketball courts at twenty-nine Milford Street, nine hundred and eleven. At the last town meeting, we voted to put lighting on the fields near this area, and so we thought that this would be a good time to, while, while they're doing the other lighting, to stay Monday and do the lighting at that time.
Yeah, we received a grant to replace all the lighting, to tell new lights on the ball field. This, at the same time, this thing was, it was, I think, a lot of shapes, and water and art, and all of their, all of their, all of their, so.
Thank you. Do we have ping pong recommendation? Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends that the town support Article twenty-six. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, vote is now, oh, 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 open. I'm gonna give it five seconds. Vote closed. Castings by majority. Right, Article twenty-seven, also CPC.
I move to recommend that the town will transfer three thousand dollars from CPA open space account for bright lighting, affordable, identical to Lloyd's, one hundred and five street, nine hundred and eleven.
Next. Thank you. Discussion?
This is a property that the town owns, and there's a strong hash of this invasive non-native weed, that's not a lot, and we want to remove it before it really starts to spread.
Thank you. Ping pong?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends that the town support Article twenty-seven.
Thank you very much. Further discussions? Okay, I declare the vote open. Give it like ten more seconds. Right. Vote closed. Castings by majority. Article forty-eight, also CPC.
I move to recommend that the town will transfer five hundred thousand dollars from CPA affordable housing account to subsidize an affordable housing project, fifty-two dollars.
Next slide. Do you have, um, discussion?
If I may, Mr. Moderator, Jackson, for town planner. I've been involved in affordable housing projects my whole career, I guess, and they're expensive, they're complicated, and well before me coming here, the town has been moving forward on fifty-two products, which is right next to the current senior center on a affordable housing project. There's a lot of obstacles there, wetlands, there's the fact that it's a public, public board, sort of town, so therefore it's limited in the number of units, which all brings me to the fact that ninety-nine percent, and, and I'll add that it's out to bid now, for a developer to hopefully bid on it and develop forty-four units of affordable housing now. And almost ninety-nine percent positive, it's gonna be a nonprofit, because it's got enough critical mass for a private developer to move in on such a small project, that they consider small. So, uh, there may be, it's out to bid now, the bids are due Tuesday, timing is everything, I guess, but, uh, they may ask for a assessment from the town, what's the town gonna be able to put in, to under, help underwrite the project and make it more palatable for whomever would choose to be the successful bidder. We came up with a number of five hundred thousand, might be less, it might be zero, but we won't know, and the case of getting it done tonight is that it's an extremely competitive market out there for nonprofits, to compete for what we call tax credits, which is building equity, and they, they come out once a year, they have to be, all money has to be allocated and voted on for the project before October of this year, and the timing was that we had to ask now, or otherwise, if they asked and there was no project unless we could contribute, we'd have to wait another year, and as we work in the senior center, these things don't get cheaper, they get more expensive. So we're asking that we transfer five hundred thousand for this project, and we will see if, 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 if,[1434.02]
Um, any further discussion? Okay, I'm, uh, opening the vote, and declare vote open. Five more seconds. All right, uh, vote is closed. This pass is by a majority. Right, moving on, Article twenty-nine, also CPA C. This one will require a two-thirds vote, that's a borrowing. What? It's because of possible borrowing involved, we can't vote to make that so.
How are you?
Yes, I'm pleased to know.
The Community Preservation Committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate some one point eight million to purchase conservation, conservation restriction on two hundred and one plus minus acres owned by Peter Biden, as shown on the tax maps, twenty-three, two-two-seven thirty, twenty-three, two-two-seven thirty-four, twenty-three, two-two-seven thirty-six, twenty-three, two-two-seven forty-six, and twenty-eight, two-oh-six, one-twenty-two. To be managed next to the full by the Metacorp Land Trust and amended Conservation Commission orders with MGL Chapter one eighty-four, Section thirty-one, Act thirty-two, and Chapter forty, Section eight C, and Section twelve A of Chapter forty-four B. And I'm sorry about this motion. But we'll get a vote. For conservation and passive recreation by the public and to meet the appropriation the town is authorized to, one, transfer five hundred thousand from CPA accounts, sixty thousand from CPA helpless rate account from four hundred and forty, two thousand from CPA's undesignated fund account. And two, the treasurer with the full of the board is authorized to borrow up to one point three million under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four D, Section letter, or any other name of authority, and to issue one or four notes of the town that may be necessary without further. And in further, the President's flat board be authorized to turn on behalf of the town and amend in any or all applications deemed necessary under the land grant program, MGL Chapter one thirty-two A, Section eleven, or any program of funds anyway connected with the school for the acquisition to reduce the amount or of and the town administrator, the flat board of the Conservation Commission be authorized to enter all of the names and execute any of the payments, including the invasion of the special conservation restrictions according to MGL Chapter one eighty-four as may be necessary on behalf of the town amendment to effect said purchase. Said conservation restriction may be granted to the Metacorp Land Trust or any other organization qualified to implement such restriction and to amended Conservation Commission that I promote.
Thank you. Can you actually repeat it? No, just joking. So we have a second, um, before again, discussion, just the ping pong town recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that the town support Article twenty-nine.
Thank you. Um, discussion, do we have a participation for this one?
We do. So, there are a lot of words, and we believe in this motion. And it's because we want to apply for a state grant and it require of language of the vote. It's reimbursement grant, so we have to state that it's one point eight billion in the project. And anyone who has written a complicated state grant knows you have to jump through a million hoops, and this is one of them. Um, but what we are asking from CPA is only is five hundred thousand. Uh, over the details of the financials at the end of the presentation, but I want to let you know that this purchase will require no borrowing, no re-taxes, no debt exclusion, or no overriding. It will only require a transfer of five hundred thousand dollars from CPA accounts. For this project to be successful, it's contingent on receiving one point three million dollars of outside funding. Um, next slide. This is a map amended, and the red star shows the location of the property in the southeast area of Linden. Next slide. The property is on there road, which is off of Bates Street. The public would have access through trails to the special property tucked in the corner of Linden down a lazy road surrounded by open space. Next slide. This is an aerial view of the property outlined in red. Mostly forested with an open hayfield, wetlands, and some park pad. The funding in this vote will be used to buy a conservation restriction where the development rights are approximately two hundred acres. It will protect the property from development or perpetuity. Next slide, next slide. The landowner would still own the property, but it could never be developed, and this will be true of all future owners of the property. The owner would continue to take care of the maintenance of the property, and it's definitely something good to watch. Next slide. The Mass Audubon has contacted Metacorp Land Trust and the town because Mass Audubon searched properties all over Massachusetts, and they zeroed in on this property because it had a particularly valuable wildlife habitat, and they wanted to help the town preserve the property. Individuously, the landowner was also concerned about the property's future and wanted to protect it from development. Next slide. These are swan baleas in the wetlands in the spring, which smell as beautiful as they look. Besides the physical beauty of this property, it has its own valuable wildlife habitat. This property is directly on top of a watershed that holds the largest aquifer in Linden. This aquifer feeds many of our wells with clean water. The healthy system of intact forests, wetlands, open space on this property protects the filter or drinking water. Nature is the best filtration system.
Can I get in here? Sorry.
A healthy ecosystem also allows the rain to infiltrate into the ground and recharge the aquifer.
Sure.
Next slide. If tonight we decide not to listen to the article, the very possible outcome could be at least forty-three houses.
Oh, sorry, you can have your picture. Sorry.
According to professional experience that was done on the property and paid for by Mass Audubon.
All the law.
We know that the current owner wants to protect the property, but it's a wild card as to what the air, what the air is holding. Besides the increased traffic and increased cost of schools and houses could bring, clear cutting to build a subject in that one, lawn fertilizers, pesticides, and the imperious services of driveways and roads would be very detrimental to the aquifer. Next slide. With the conservation restriction, the town is paying less than buying the property. In this case, the town pays three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, while the land is protected and the public will be able to enjoy a open trail. Next slide. This shows the financials. The total cost of this project would be one million, eight hundred thousand dollars at most. The value of the conservation restriction is one million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The due diligence closing and conservation restriction costs are around a hundred and thirty thousand, bringing the project cost to the one point eight million. The town would pay for less than a third of the total cost, and any funds that are not spent would go back in CPA accounts. If this vote passes tonight, the following funding sources will be used. Six hundred thousand from the nature conservancy for box turtle habitat, five hundred thousand from CPA, five hundred thousand from the land grant, two hundred thousand from the Mass, Mass Audubon. We have eight hundred thousand of committed funds from the nature conservancy and Mass Audubon. The chances of receiving the land grant funds, the application isn't due till July, and so we'll find out in October whether or not we would get it or not. But the, um, chances are very good that we would receive the land grant because of the many sources of funding and ecological richness of the property. Next slide. This might be our only chance to preserve this important property. We don't hope that the future heirs will do. Houses are built and will be built in Linden, but this property is one to have wildlife habitat preserved, an aquifer to protect, and beauty to relish. It will maintain men's history, world character, and added quality of a land town. Thank you.
We have further discussion.
Kevin Rudden, forty-six Cape Road, Chairman of the Northern Water Commissioners. Just wanted everybody to know the Water Commission voting unanimously to support this article because our concern about the aquifer that lies beneath it.
Okay, to be, to be clear, I prefer to the town council on this. Uh, even if the funding sources are specified, authorize as borrowing. So this will need to happen to the third, so we can change this, that voting system. There's more discussion involved, but the votes not open yet. Okay, we'll see. All right, next.
Um, Amy Park from forty-four, yeah, and so I would just like to become supportive of this, of this, uh, of this, because, uh, as I've supported, uh, this important via measures to preserve from one oh four and one oh six laws that passed, I would like to, uh, sort of, especially sort of supported in observing wildlife and observing the rule of management as well. And also I kind of have a question of, is the, uh, any of, any of the property, are those open to agricultural use?
Do we have an answer for that?
They'll continue to be paid by the owner at this point, but in the conservation restriction, it would allow for future agriculture.
Do we have somebody else? You got someone?
Monty, any or sixty C, no doubt. So I just clarify a couple of things. We just talked about, so the, we just talked about two pieces of property that are possibly going to be used for affordable housing, which would increase kids' school possibly, right? But now we're talking about by restricting more land to keep kids out of school. That's one of the priorities that we just talked about, right? So we don't have more houses. So we're conflicted on which is it. Uh, and secondly, couldn't the homeowner or the landowner just put a deed restriction in? And that would take care of this rather than spending one point eight million dollars? Again, we're giving the landowner one point eight million dollars, correct? Is that on that one? So one point, so one point six eight five million for the landowner, but we don't give to owner. Again, we're, we're, we just did this not too long ago, uh, right over here on Monty, no doubt. We're giving away money to just buy development rights when we could just eat the shit.
Yeah, um, so the person owns this property, their, their wealth is in this land. Most people's wealth is in a house. And when you sell your house, you want to get money for it. You're not going to give it away. And that's the situation with this person. They want to, they could sell it to developers, make money, but this person wants to protect it and preserve it and get the money that he, the property is worth. Um, in terms of the borrowing versus conservation restriction, the conservation restriction has many benefits. Um, first of all, it costs less money to preserve the land. The land is kept under tax rules. The town is not responsible for maintenance. The owner continues to care for the property, and the property, and this property is well taken care of. However, the town will have access and can build trails. In this situation, the Metacorp Land Trust will uphold the conservation restriction, so they'll help with the monitoring and their committees to help with the trail work.
Monty, any or sixty C, no doubt. I understand that part of the interest in the land, and they don't like to sell the whole piece. But if I have an interest in, in my house, and I want to then get that money out of it, I can't go to the town and say, hey, can you give me what it's worth? Or give me a portion of what it's worth, and I won't do this to it anymore? It just doesn't make much sense to me. I, I don't understand why we're buying up development rights just to buy them. Uh, when you, again, there's so many other ways to do this, and we don't have to use tax dollars to do it.
Thank you. We've done the discussion on this. Moving into the vote, vote is now open. Okay, five more seconds. All right, vote is closed. Cessing by two-thirds. All right, Article thirty, in the home stretch, vote. Thirty is a planning word. Mr. Moderator, Article thirty is a citizen's petition. Okay, I, I was told that once it's a petition by the council, I was told it's a planning word article.
It's requested by a citizen, but it was not a citizen's petition.
So anyone who never took any action to put this on the ballot, we were told it's a petition.
They had a hearing.
Yeah, oh yeah, I know that, but I will contend now.
Did the planning board hold a legislature?
Absolutely.
And if they didn't, then?
Yeah.
Then, in terms of, it's to, they better hear what this is to really work.
Yeah, it's my.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. Okay, moderator, I move the town vote to amend the town amendment zoning map as amended through May third, twenty twenty-one, by changing the zoning district in which Three Bates Street, Men, Massachusetts, is located, imparting or complacency in the highway business district to complete in the rural residential district and isolate.
Second.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, I can, I can come, but do we, I think, do we have like a map of this or a presentation show behind? Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, discussion?
Well, I can tell you, uh, regardless of the citizen's petition or not, the planning board did vote a public hearing. We're dealing with number three, there's a triangle in red. On the, um, current zoning map, that, one of that property is divided by half highway business and half residential. The owner would like it all to be residential. Landlord had a public hearing for testimony and voted unanimously to support the article.
Thank you very much. Um, we, we have resident hearing.
Hi, Eric Hodge, I'm the, uh, resident homeowner of Three Bates Street. Uh, I'm the senator for Article thirty tonight. Um, so Article thirty is submitted, uh, more or less to correct a clerical error in zoning at Three Bates Street. Uh, historically and presently, Three Bates Street has been a rural residential use. Uh, however, due to inconsistencies in zoning maps, hand drawn maps, and digitization of those maps, which you see in front of you now. Uh, current zoning at some point now indicates that Three Bates Street is owned in highway business, which has never been the intent of prior zoning. As such, I'd ask the town to correct the zoning of Three, uh, Three Bates Street's rules.
Thank you. Um, further discussion? Also, I have to note, because this is an art, because this motion would change the town's zoning bylaws, this would require a two-thirds vote. Um, do we have any other discussion? I'm going to open the vote. If not, seeing go on, the vote is down. Okay, time, you can go with five more seconds. Vote closed. Cessing by two-thirds. All right, Article thirty-one, also planning word.
I move that the town will vote to amend the Menendez zoning bylaw by asserting Section five point zero six, Groundwater Protection District, and amend the Menendez zoning map accordingly. Copy of the proposed amendment and map of the overlay district is available to the town clerk office and posted on the town's website. I so believe.
You, um, so this is for Finance Committee recommendations, since it is changing the zoning bylaws, will require a two-thirds? Do we have discussion?
Um, we have, we have, uh, yes. Um, it seems to be as being these last few articles, but as you'll learn, right, at least I'm learning every day that, uh, vengeance is war for it. Uh, and that is a commodity that many, many towns, at least in Massachusetts, probably all country, should be jealous of. Uh, and I, um, discussed this with a property owner in southeast Linden, the property's map. Eric, um, in southeast, uh, in southeastern Linden, where actually very close to where Ann was talking about, he said, uh, this property owner said his father said that we're living on pure gold, living on pocket gold. And think about, you know, I thought about it, obviously, on the way down here. I mean, at least in my field, how many times have we heard about peaches, this and that, and all the towns and all the cities that, um, are relying on water? We're going to be, that property, uh, this is then, and obviously, the blue is the aquifer. Two-thirds of the town in Linden, maybe a lot of you guys are drawing their water off of this aquifer, except for the few, the few that are on public water. Um, we need to protect this. This article is, um, trying to protect noxious uses to be at last from being allowed next to you or anywhere within this aquifer. And then even go there. And I'm just going to list what it's prohibited. The underlying zoning, though probably ninety percent of that map is rural residential, will not change. On Route sixteen, on Cape Road, and on Hartford East, it's going commercial. That won't change whatsoever. But you will not be able to have a landfill or a dump, or a junkyard, or, uh, having wastewater residue, or treating hazardous waste unless it's in small quantities. Petroleum and oil and heating plant station, liquid hazardous materials, storage of swell deceptive, storage, storage of de-icing chemicals, animal denier unless it's contained or agricultural, uh, storage of fertilizers, again, unless it's agricultural, stockpiling, disposal, smelling ice. And I, and there's a few more, but you get the gist. We're trying, even though they're probably mostly prohibited now anyway, we're trying to make it as obvious as possible that you can't do this on our aquifer. We need to protect this. This is the goal of this map. Maybe in a hundred years, we'll need it, I don't know. But it's going to be needed, to lead. Um, so we're asking for this. This is a template right off of DEP. And if we start protecting this, this aquifer, then DEP will open size and Menendez is trying to protect the resources and probably offer us grants which they have in the past to keep protecting that aquifer. And I think the water committee is reading, um, uh, recommended this or made a comment about this. So that's really what this article is about, is trying to protect this resource.
We have more discussion on water.
Kevin Rudden, forty-six Cape Road, Chairman of the Northern Water Commissioners. Just want everybody to know the Water Commission voting unanimously to support this article. Do our concern about protecting the aquifer.
Okay, come here.
Get a buyer, hundred and two, problem street. We need to make a really minor amendment to correct, sorry. We need to make a minor amendment to correct, um, some type on that's in this draft. Something that we listed in the language.
You have a great ear in front of you. Do we consider way to get the amendment up on the?
Okay. So the amendment is in a deep place in the bylaw, it refers to Section seven and Section eight, and we need to make that say Section G and Section H. Just an error with automatic numbering of the word, we didn't catch. It doesn't change the bylaw.
So, so just, um, so we're clear, since this is just an amendment to the motion, um, it'll only require a majority. Um, so do we, do we have a second on the amendment?
Seven.
Okay, um, do we have discussion of the amendment? It's only amended. Okay, I open the vote on commending the original motion. Minus, you amend the motion to stay there. You give it five more seconds. Vote closed. Cesses. New motion, which says? Forty. Here, yeah, we have discussion on the new motion, and we have discussion over here on my right.
Thank you, JP Barnes, forty-five, North Ave. Uh, just a question, obviously, the, the upper boundary doesn't stop neatly at its town boundaries. Is there discussion with neighboring towns to coordinate protection of this option?
I don't know, but I can tell you every town I've worked in, probably too many, seven or eight of them all have this bylaw. I wouldn't be surprised if I don't. He told, I can find out from the. I can find out from the middle of it.
We have further discussion. Right here on the left.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. James Prusell, 70 Valley Street. Mr. Hunter White, the blue area is the proposed overlay district. Correct. And it allays, you said, Route 16 and Cape Road as well.
Not all of 16, probably all of Cape Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you got, if this bylaw change is enacted tonight, does that make gasoline stations and repair stations pre-existing non-reformable uses so they can continue?
I shouldn't mention.
My favor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Former TA. Anything that I listed, and gas stations are on there, would be automatically ground block. However, the gas stations, they're still ran by special permit, provided they comply with DEP standards for their tanks. There's only one gas station in this area that we identify as on Cape Road. And so they already have up to speed DEP regulated tanks, so we're uncomfortable.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm right. Do we have any other discussion? Does not appear so. With keep in mind, this amended motion needs two thirds to pass, which will change the town's zoning bylaws. I am opening the vote now. Okay, again, time. Five more seconds here. Vote closed. All right, caste by two thirds. Thank you. Here. All right. We now have Article 32. Just a couple left, maybe to call a jury or Friday.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Pond Street as laid out by the select board as a public way within the town, and to further authorize the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, taking, or otherwise any fee easement or other interest in Pond Street, and I so move it.
Second. Discussion.
Select Board held a public hearing on April 10, 2024, and voted to accept the layout of Pond Street as the final step of town meeting, but accept the road for it to be designated as a public street and receive town services.
Beautiful. Then we have, we have, up here behind me, after referring the town council, this will require a two-thirds vote because of the language that authorizes it. That may not happen if it authorizes it, so a two-thirds majority for this. Neat discussion. Five more seconds. Vote closed. Caste by two thirds. All right, Article 33.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve the $10 million debt authorized by Blackstone Valley Vocation Regional District School Committee on February 15, 2024, and amended by its actions of March 14, 2024, to pay costs of roof reconstruction and the replacement to energy-efficient rooftop HBA C units at the Blackstone Valley Regional Vocation Technical High School located at 65 Bleden Street up in Mass, including payment of all costs, incidental, or related thereto. Such debt approved by the town could be contingent upon the district's ability to secure grant approval from the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Retire Grant Program, and I so move it.
Second. And this, here at town council, because it's accepting, a group of debt that come out, incurring debt, it's only requires a majority, and we have further discussion as well as implementation. Step.
Mr. Moderator, Dr. Michael Chris Patrick, your superintendent of vocational tactical school district for the past 31 years. I appreciate the support from the Finance Committee. Frankly, there is no Finance Committee across the 13 towns, as indicated in the article with this. It does indicate that the district will accept the arming responsibility of the total, but Mendon's obligation is 6.4%, with no obligation in FY '25. Also, you'll notice that in order to respond to the request of the Finance Committee across the district, the district school committee agreed that they would advance this only to the state for more than the grant. We filed with the state, they're watching to see what our towns do. We do not want to give the state any excuse not to give us the grant, or to protect the roof, which is 34 years old, and this building itself is 65 years old, which still makes it nothing but a superpedant. Look for yourself.
Thank you. Do we have a Finance Committee representation of this?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the town score.
Thank you. Further discussion? Right. Take five more seconds. Vote closed. Caste is by majority. All right. Article 34. Final article.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the town amendment general bylaw of chapter two by adding section seven. All citizens petitioned warrant articles to be submitted pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 39, Section 10, for inclusion on any town meeting warrant must be delivered to the select board's office no later than the warrant closing date of such town meeting, and I so move it.
Second. Thank you. Do we have discussion?
The proposed bylaw is needed to set the timeframe in which a citizen's petition can be properly included on a town meeting warrant. We have requirements about timing so that all citizens can receive a hard copy of the warrant before we actually have an town meeting. And without this bylaw, technically, a citizen could come in with a petition the day before the town meeting and require it to be on the warrant, so it conflicts with another bylaw. So what this does is really housekeeping to make sure that everybody's still allowed to put citizen petitions forward, but they have to do it in the time advantage, so we actually have enough time to get it distributed to everybody, so everyone knows it was actually on the warrant.
Thank you very much. Do we have some discussion?
What a question, which I'll answer when Joe Crossin. It's going to be posted somewhere, when that deadline is, on your website, or on the Mendon bulletin board, so that we're aware of these deadlines?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion, I am going to open the vote. Five more seconds. Vote closed. All right. Discussion. All right. Discussion. All right. Thank you very much. Have a great day, everyone.